But I don't see it most three reports out there tonight.
Right. We're live at seven o'clock when it's all the stand for the pledge of the. All right, Darcy, if you want to do the roll call, Baker.
Yeah.
Coon.
Yeah.
Dryden.
Here.
Hedrick.
Here.
Heinz. Mitchell.
Here.
Sassy. Thompson.
Here.
Ambulance. Finance. Police. Public Works. All right, thank you. Could I get a motion to approve the minutes of the June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five regular council meeting? Okay, Kevin, and second by Betsy. All in favor of approving the minutes of the June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five regular council meeting, say aye. Any abstaining? No, full, clide of things. All right, next is old business. So could I get the ordinance committee?
Sure. The ordinance committee met on Monday, June twenty-third, twenty twenty-five at four o'clock. In attendance was Mayor, Deb Dionne, Director of Finance, John Center, council members Kevin Thompson and Betsy Hedrick. But Brendan Heidner was there from the Ranger. The agenda number one was Resolution thirty-one twenty-one. The committee discussed Resolution thirty-one twenty-one. The mayor will draft an edited version of the resolution to address identified concerns. The mayor emphasized that certain matters such as public hearings may need to be taken directly to the full council prior to further committee discussion. Number two is the addendum to J and P Pound Puppy's contract. As FYI, the committee acknowledged the addendum to J and P Pound Puppy Service Agreement. The addendum clarifies that the current six-month agreement is temporary. Dogs will remain at the pound for ninety-six hours and licensed dogs will be reached home to their owners in accordance with Glendale City Council ordinances ninety-four dash twenty through ninety-four dash thirty-four. Number three is a reminder for fireworks for this weekend. This is just a reminder. July one, two, and three, and five, one P M. to ten P M. July four, ten A M. to one or twelve oh one A M. Agenda item number four nuisance dog update, three hundred Little Street. An update was given on the nuisance dog complaint at three hundred Little Street. The mayor drafted a letter to the property owner and has been in communication with them. The situation has since improved. The mayor has also spoken to the original petition signers regarding this matter. Number five nuisance property, one oh three South Rossers. FYI, an update, the mayor provided an update on the nuisance property located at one oh three South Rosser. Noticeable progress has been made at the property and the city will continue enforcement of the applicable ordinance. We adjourned at four o'clock.
Thank you. Any questions about Betsy's report? All right. The Personnel Committee report. I think that's him too, Betsy.
Okay. Personnel Committee report. We met on the same day, Monday, June twenty-three, twenty twenty-five at four thirteen. Same people were in attendance. Uh, we had one agenda item discussed. It was just an FYI, the Fourth of July holiday schedule. The mayor informed the committee that City Hall will be closed on Friday, July four, twenty twenty-five, and observance of the Fourth of July holiday. Thursday, July three, City Hall will also be closed. There will be departments that will be closed, but the central services will remain operational as needed. We adjourned at four sixteen. And minutes submitted from us.
Okay, thank you. I just have one thing to add is that I did, uh, ask the sanitarian about the nuisance complaint on the property of one oh three Rosser. So, um, Mr. Gordon said the property owner came in person to speak with me about the nuisance complaint on six twenty-four, twenty-five. He refuted some of the alleged nuisance conditions which I could neither confirm or refute without entering his property. He mentioned having made some progress, about one quarter completed on mitigating the conditions he does not deny, and gave a target completion date of eight thirty twenty-five. I plan to re-inspect on or after this date in his company. So that's what's going on with that property right now. I just wanted to give you that update because it was just FYI, I didn't put it on new business. All right, now it's public comments. Do we have any public promise? Yes, you want to come forward and just tell me your name and your address and speak.
Okay. I've got special smart. Probably more people can get reimbursed from our C D L medical examinations. That's money out of our pocket on that day. Fifty-five bucks right now. But, uh, I've talked to guys at the shop and they say I don't understand why in this building we have our national back to the city. Our department head is in the building, so I get under the why it has to take that long.
The only thing that I could say for a reason, Kobe, would be because it would come to the council. Now, in the past, I guess you guys used to get it paid out of petty cash. But so if you say you go and get your physical on July sixteenth, we don't have another council meeting till August fifth.
I understand that a little wider than.
Yeah.
Parted by law.
Right.
That's, you know, all real life. But it's just the fact that I have to, I'm gonna be out, I'm sixty-five bucks next week. When am I gonna see my check? It doesn't make sense to me why we have to sit around and wait for that much.
To wait for the council meeting.
I mean, a council decision that needs to be made.
Well, I'll check.
Right now.
Right. We could, and I think we could, I could look at it too and see why it was changed from writing a petty cash check because there were resolutions that were made to try to make sure that everything was equal. But, uh, yes, uh, I was talking to Darcy about this just this week because we did have somebody else bring this concern forward, so. Um, yeah. It's, oh, I do too.
I'm just saying, it's just a principle.
Right. Right. Well, it's not on the agenda, so technically we can't make a decision about it at this meeting, unfortunately. Um. But I will bring it to the Fuper meeting on Wednesday and we will have have it on the agenda for the fifteenth. That's our next council meeting when we could vote on it to, uh, go back to doing it with petty cash. Does anybody else have any, um, discussion about this? Because, you know, I mean, I've been here not quite two years, but do you remember why we started making that come through the council rather than just a petty cash? Do you have any idea?
Don't. That's part of the normal operating procedure of the Public Works Department. It's basically already budgeted. It should already kind of be a line item budget that, um, it's not set in stone every year because of various, but I don't see why a check couldn't be written.
Where I work, they just go. Yeah, well, I was gonna ask. I was gonna say that. I was gonna ask that.
I guess I'd ask you, Kobe, sometimes when I see the receipts, they're like from different places, so you guys choose where you want to go. Now, maybe if we could. If we could. Yeah.
Then it comes down twice a lot.
Yeah.
And so, exactly, that factor into what with every one of us, I think.
I think sometimes if one place is both, you can call another place. It's Sydney to do it period.
Well, that's what I'm wondering if we couldn't make an arrangement with a provider to bill us that you got.
Not the interest in sorry, but the thing is, all our dates are different.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
My date passed before you.
Oh, I see.
Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. So Kobe, doesn't the boss man know when you guys are gonna go do this or couldn't he?
It's up to us, Mike, to schedule it.
Okay.
And then we go to like Ted and say, hey, I'm taking off Monday afternoon, getting my physical done. I gotta go to Sydney where I'm gonna be off for two hours. It's up here, Glendale, Memphis, Philly. So unless we tell them, which we obviously do.
Yeah.
But it's nothing that's there in charge of. We get the notifications to stay. Schedule it.
But they could then notify the city and we could, I think, like Jason said and so on. I don't know why we, things like that that are contractual, basically. Why don't we just? Why don't we just pay for it upfront?
Everybody's schedule is gonna be a little different.
But as long as it goes through the administration, excuse me, but as long as it goes through your bosses to us, so it's not employees, just, you know, where it's all, then why not? Because I agree, you know, you shouldn't have to be out of the pocket for it. Makes more sense.
Yes.
And then, because I'm not on the personnel. So I'm, that is in the meeting contract that the city will pay. Yeah.
Yeah.
Then.
Then maybe we don't need to take it to Fuper and take it to the next meeting. I think I can just talk to John about this and you can just cut you a check. Okay. Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Good. As long as the administration's involved, so that way it doesn't get.
Right.
Stuck.
Yeah.
They gotta do their communication.
Right.
Not that that ever is flat.
All right, and next item is new business. Um. It is ordinance number seven, twenty twenty-five. The second reading of an ordinance amending chapter seventy-five parking schedule, schedule one, street sweeping district. Glendale City Code of the City of Glendale. So you you all can read it. It is basically saying that parking is prohibited in the downtown areas between four and seven A M. on Tuesday and Wednesday for street sweeping. So I'll busy one minute to look it over, but I don't think you need me to read it to you. I read it last time.
Mayor, can I ask a question? And I don't know if Chief Mills wants to weigh in on this or whatever, but.
Oh, I didn't even make a motion yet. I'm sorry.
Oh, oh, do you want me to stop that?
No, is it about this?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, well, let's make a motion to, uh, for the second reading of ordinance seven twenty-five. So Mike, please, in a second, but okay, I'll see Doug because he's closer. All right.
Well, I was just wondering, you know, in terms of the practicality of the enforcement. Um, enforcement comes basically from the police department and you guys do it. Probably maybe, maybe you've heard complaints from Public Works that people are parking in those spots when they're supposed to do the street sweeping. I'm not saying that's, or is it just to use the word more random than that? Or is it more like, okay, we got people that are uh, what's word, limiting our ability to get those streets sweeping done because they're leaving their cars there during this time and there's a sign that says, don't have your car here at that time. Um, or is it more just you guys just check on it, um?
Often need to read up the name of the judge. Those citations that they wrote. Every one of them gave us full the call. Um, and there's apartment complexes there and so a lot of them were concerned that they were parking on the street because they have the apartment and they're advising the city park it plot. And then saying where it's one of the bar, say we're concerned that I never, we have to leave our cars here if it's like great, but then we're giving the city.
I guess my concern would be that we all know things don't always work like they're supposed to and street sweepers, in case you haven't been here, they break down. And so I imagine sometimes they're like, we gotta catch up. And today's Thursday, but we're street sweeping. My point is then that's fine. We just deal with it. We don't enforce anything or we don't harass, um, that's the wrong word, but we don't call people into question because we're street sweeping on a Thursday. This says it's gonna happen on Tuesday and Wednesday. In a perfect world, that's exactly how it would be, but I don't think.
It's for, you know, snow removal and and street sweeping and to have the cars out of the way so they can do a good job. But yeah, quality land on it or things happen. They may have to do it on a different day and it just won't be as.
Can't keep adjusting to what the reality of doing work is. You gotta deal with what's been put on paper here.
We had to make the change because it was Friday that we had on our signs and we're, we don't work Fridays, so. Anyway, we hope this is gonna work. All right. So any other discussion about the street sweeping district? We've, Frank ordered the signs. Um, so this won't go in effect until thirty days after the second reading, so that'll be thirty days from today, probably about the first of all this. We should have the signs and have them up by then, so. Their concerns. All right. So we have to do a roll call vote because this is an ordinance. So if you want to do the roll call, Darcy. Mitchell. Hedrick.
Hi.
Thompson. Sassy. Dryden. Baker. Coon. Motion passes seven four zero against. All right, the next item is can I get a motion to approve the addendum to the J and P Pound Puppy's contract? Okay, five, in a second. Okay, Kevin. All right, so the pound puppies addendum simply says that this attachment is to address concerns that the temporary six-month agreements has two specific requirements which are different than the current Glendale City ordinances. The current Glendale City ordinances nine four point two oh through nine four point three four specify the time a dog is to remain at the pound and that licensed dogs running at large will be impounded. This addendum is to acknowledge the six-month service agreement is temporary and under disagreement. The dogs will remain at the pound for ninety-six hours. Our ordinance says seventy-two. And licensed dogs will be returned to owners. At the termination of the temporary agreement, the city will return to the requirements in the current city ordinances. So any discussion about that? Yes, Mike?
Yeah, Mayor, I know this has come up. So is it, um, the clarity is on this that a licensed dog that is returned to the owner based on this addendum is still ticketed for their dog at large. Is that correct?
Yes, usually. Um. But our ordinance says that any dog running at large licensed or unlicensed will be taken to the pound.
Right.
So I know there's been some fuss about these changes, but but we are giving an extra day to try to locate the owner. And we are taking licensed dogs back to the owner or calling the owner. So for people to avoid their dog going to the pound, they simply have to license the dog. And of course, the city has been taking some grief, you know, that we're killing the dogs. So I just want to make clear that I did a little bit of research because no dog has been put down since I became mayor. That was twenty-one months ago. So the last time a dog was put down was in was in January of twenty twenty-two. So it's not like we're running out and trying to get people's dogs and go have them put to sleep. What we're trying to do is make sure that there is room at the pound for the dogs that need to be impounded. And the current agreement, which we have had with the pound puppies since before I became mayor states that even the pound can call us or we could call the pound and always ask for more time for the dog to be adopted. And they have, they did that at first, called me and told me that they, you know, we're gonna keep the dog longer. Um, I will admit that I wasn't aware that there, that one of the dogs that was there or had been there eight hundred days. So that's a long time to for a dog to live at the pound. Um, but they did get three dogs adopted last weekend, so they do have room for our dogs now. Um. But if they do end up getting full again, then we we will have to make some hard choices, which we just simply haven't had to do. Uh, luckily, most of the time, it seems like the owner does come and pay the fees and get the dog. But we have to be realistic for now. Um, this is a temporary a- agreement. It's not a permanent agreement, so if we can come up with something that's better, uh, I'm not opposed to that, but this agreement will, um, be through the end of December. It's a six-month agreement. So it gets us through the end of the year. They have a new, uh, I don't know what you call it, like a shed that they're gonna put some more, um, dog kennels in there. So they may be, would be able to take, uh, eight dogs instead of four dogs. So they seem to be trying to help and they're trying to do their best with what they have. So, um, I just felt like we needed to make it clear because someone was complaining that we weren't following our own ordinances. So this addendum states that it's a temporary situation and once it's resolved, um, we'll go back to our other ordinances. Any other questions or concerns about the dogs? No? All right, so all in favor of a approving the addendum to the six-month service contract between the City of Glendale and the J and P Pound Puppy, say aye. All right. That passes. All right, the next thing is I need to get a motion to discuss Resolution number three one two one. Okay, all right, Betsy and Jason second that. So it's in your packet. It's Resolution number three one two one. Um, like I said, we did have an incident arise where we're looking at needing to have a public hearing and it suggested that the public hearing for this zoning should be first heard by the public and that it should not go to a committee where we discuss it and perhaps give our opinions about it, which could influence the public. So that would be something where we wouldn't be able to take it to a committee. The, there are a few other times when, um, someone gives us a a street closure request or alcohol, um, waiver that it's not in top, it's not at the right time for it to go to the right committee. So in that case, we have, we took some of those things to, um, instead of going to the street committee, it went to ordinance so that it would be in time for the council meeting. So after some discussions, uh, with Betsy and with, uh, John Center, I do feel that this resolution is a valid resolution and I can see why it's important, not only for public transparency, but, um, so that people do have a chance to come to a committee meeting and express their concern about it. So, um, written on your resolution in your packet, it, it has some handwriting there that says, um, perhaps we should put it in there that the council retains the right to send it back to the correct committee for deliberation. I don't know if we need that. That's what I'm hoping we can discuss because I think that's inferred, that I think you guys always know that you have that ability to send it back. And I know this was a question that you had last time, Mike, you asked. Um, you said this should have gone to the street committee and why did it go to the other committee? So certainly I know that I think you guys understand that you have that ability that if we do need to send it back for deliberation, we could. Um. So I'm not sure that I actually need to make a change to the resolution if we're in agreement that where it says, um, the recommendation by the appropriate committee tasked with the area assignments. So I don't know if I need to change it a little to put this in. We, from what I Googled, it says you can, um, add to a resolution as long as it does not significantly change the meaning of it. So I would say to add that the council retains the right to send it back to the committee. It's not changing it substantially, but on the other hand, I don't know if we really even need it in there because I think everybody knows that we could, so. Yes, Rick?
Uh, so I agree because, um, I totally stand behind why this resolution is here.
Yes.
And there are all of those circumstances, but so my question slash point is with this current resolution, if we take a subject on an action item at a council meeting, we, we cannot do that and put this resolution in. So we couldn't send it back to the to a committee because we can't vote on it according to this. So my thought would be, and maybe it's a dumb idea, but it's something I thought of, um, is if there's a subject that either didn't have time to go to a committee meeting or is an emergency, I guess, something, um, that the council could vote to add it to the agenda. You could put that into a vote.
Yeah.
So in that way, then everybody would be on board with adding that to the agenda to discuss at length and then be able to vote on it.
Sure. Okay, any other suggestions or concerns?
Just so the folks at home are clear, we're not trying to get rid of the committee discussions.
No.
Certain things pop up. Oh, shoot, we only have a week here.
Right. Well, you know, we can als- always call an emergency meeting too, but I don't always think that some of this is necessarily an emergency just because of somebody's lack of planning. Um, you know, and I value your time and I, and my time is valuable, so you know, I'm not gonna be wanting to call a special meeting for, for some of these things, but I do see why you have this resolution and I think it's important because you never know, um, what's gonna happen in the future. So it's just good to have things in place and there was a reason why we did this resolution, so I think, um.
There's been like two or three. Well, and I mean, the reason we put this revolution in place was it was becoming a common place to bombard at a council meeting with the vote on something that will be nothing about. And it was the first time being brought to us and we literally had like three minutes to decide and make a decision and vote on. Um, it was, you know, there were things on there that we weren't comfortable with making that sort of decision. And so those were things that were skipping the committee meetings. And so that's why we put this in place was, hey, we need to have a committee meeting for the public and for us to be able to get the information, shoe on it and make a form of decision.
In my mind, Mayor, those aforementioned items were fairly significant at the time at least, and so whether, we have rather routine requests in the sense that they come every year and I didn't mean to make a big falderball about those types of requests, uh. But I, the, the, the resolution here that we're looking at came for not routine matters. And um, but I do have a question here. If you guys would look at it, I'm a little confused on what a special city council meeting is. And then we have emergency city council in the next line. So what's the difference between a special city council, which I don't know what that is actually, and an emergency city council? Every city, some people say every city council is special, but um, it's a little confusing to me there.
Should be one or the other, is that a special council meeting?
Okay, okay, cuz it says special must not occur the same day of a committee meeting. And then emergency city council meetings where a quorum of members are present, discussed and voted um, are present can be discussed and voted on the same day. So that seems contradictory to me. Those two lines and I'm, I'm a little confused about it here.
I, I read it like this.
Okay.
Okay, so I, and I didn't write this thing. So special city council meetings must not occur on the same day of a committee meeting. So they're saying if we, if you wanted to have a special council meeting um, because it didn't come to the appropriate committee, it couldn't be on the same day as the committee meeting. Now, when they're talking about the next thing, they say emergency city coun- council meetings where a quorum or all members are present can be discussed and voted on the same day. But that's an emergency council meeting, it's not a committee meeting.
Right, but the city, special city council meeting is a council meeting.
Yeah.
The one, the one thing I might say that even when this came up, if we could just track that line out, this special city council meeting must not. Cuz I mean, I'm okay as a committee member if we said, hey, we got a hot topic coming up, we don't have much time. Can we have a Hooper meeting at two? Where we get to have time to, to on it and then be able to make it sooner later. So as long as they still went to a committee, I would be okay with doing it the same day if it had to. So I would say in my, taking out that line, special council meeting must not occur on the same day as the.
Okay, I don't have a problem with that.
I think it's actually an emergency city council meeting cuz um, I don't know what the difference is between special and emergency because if you call a.
But something about the need to um, post it, like you, you get some leeway when it's an emergency. I think that something like you, it doesn't have to, you don't have to give the forty eight hours notice if it's an emergency.
Okay, well, if that's by law, Mr. Attorney, then that's great. Okay.
But.
I've heard the same thing be called special. Well, it's.
Yeah, instead of, right.
Well, I, yeah, that's, that's a great point if that's um, applicable in law.
Right, but I do not wanna give anybody the idea that we're trying to enact something so that we don't have to give people forty eight hours notice or so that we're not informing the people that we're having a meeting. What we're trying to do is clarify how committee agendas come forward to the council. But, but it ha- it's not that we're, because this does help with transparency and it does help with um, people being able to come to a committee meeting where you have a little bit more time to um, discuss it and um, and you don't have to, you know. But of course you don't vote on it because there's, there's not a quorum at a committee meeting. It's just for discussion and then it can be moved forward as an action item, but they aren't, it isn't always happening, you know, so.
Yes, uh, speaking of that, so um, I agree with Mr. Kuna on that, but here's the, the situation. Okay, we have forty eight hours to call, we call the committee meeting, this item is on there. And then we want, because of time and situation, an emergency, we want to act later that day on that item. Nobody can be for sure exactly what the committee will do based on the interaction and the um, input from community and so on. And so on your forty eight hours, you'd have the committee agenda identified. And then you would identify the council agenda at the same time, I would think, so that you got the forty eight hours covered. And if the committee decides not to go ahead with that or something or other, you possibly just counsel, excuse me, counsel, the city council. Cancel, I'm sorry, cancel the city council meeting. But if it did go through as, that's why we put items on the agenda cuz we want action to
Right.
to take place on in whatever form is most appropriate. Then the um, council could take action that evening if, if that's what they did. They just have to do the forty eight hours, I'm guessing a little bit cuz the law is sitting out there with.
I'm gonna, gonna throw a lit junior, this is, I haven't found anything specific, but this was where my thought was as well. Is emergency is something dire?
Yeah.
Public health, safety, things like that, something where someone just needs a waiver, that should probably be a special. That doesn't really qualify as an emergency, so that would be where you have to. Rather than it's an emergency, you know, you guys need to make a big decision. The flood or something like that, um, that you guys. Yeah, and I was gonna say that, that uh, it, you could fact check me, but what I can't, whether it's a committee meeting, that has to be known as well or a council meeting. And to, to be able to call it an emergency, so this would be people on the public for transparency, there are very um, certain legal requirements that your emergency has to meet.
Right.
So you can't just call an emergency for, it has to meet a certain criteria to be an emergency.
Yes.
Be to call an emergency meeting, whether it be a meeting or. So you would just be calling emergency meetings to try to shove something down someone's throat.
A discharge of an employee where there was egregious action could possibly be, not just any employees, not the department head or the councils involved, cuz we're not really involved on the employees at the level. It's not department head directly where department head then I would think that would be an emergency meeting if they needed to take action in that very short period cuz of some sort of egregious situation, which doesn't need to be identified at this moment.
So I'm hearing you say that a special council meeting should maybe stay in there because there's a difference between a special council meeting and an emergency council meeting. And that we wanna add that we well, I don't know if this would be the appropriate place to add, vote to add it to the agenda, which of course we already know that we can do that. This is for resolution for committee reports. So I guess I'm just gonna ask if um, what is it that we wanna have in here in the end?
Well, I can add, I've been on this. I, I, the council retains the right to send back to committee for deliberation. Don't we have that right at any council meeting?
Well, that's why I'm saying. I don't think that it does, that's why I'm.
That's called tabling something. I mean, isn't that same as a table?
Yeah.
Where you say uh, the council does not can act on it tonight. And then at the next council meeting, you're supposed to bring it up if it's tabled. And you could also, I would say, take it to the committee and they could bring it back to the council for their consideration. There must have been some issues with it.
I think it should have said correct committee because this was in regards to it not coming from the appropriate committee, not the street committee, instead the ordinance committee. But I believe that that's inferred and that as council members, you all know that if you're not comfortable with that, something that it could always um, like you said, be.
So I would, I would still say that we need to say that with the two third vote or two third vote, that we can add something to the agenda if otherwise, according to our own resolution. If we tried to vote on something that didn't have a committee meeting before it, it is going against our resolution, no matter if it's an emergency or not.
Yeah.
So if we, if we.
So I could add that sentence in, in there and I don't think it's a significant change to the resolution. I mean, that's what I think, but.
That just gives us an avenue.
Right.
Mayor and, and Betsy and where, where is that, where you have a, have two third um, majority to add something to the agenda at that council meeting? We had that right before. Is that not still uh, policy?
Yeah.
Could we use?
Well, but, but.
Then that got, uh, that's, that didn't.
I know, I've done it.
Yeah, but then it got challenged.
Yeah.
Because we, we were then, it didn't look transparent because we'd be voting on stuff that the public didn't have a chance to know about. And so then it's almost kind of the same thing, you'd be slipping something into last minute on an agenda item, but uh, and so it was then it was said that, well, if you're not talking about finances, spending money or that type of thing, it was something minor, but then even that would challenge. So I don't know if being able to add something onto an agenda item without it being publicly noticed is legal or not.
I mean.
In the end, emergency.
And then therefore, uh, John.
Mm-hmm, yes.
You just can't make any decision that we buy.
So here's, here's situations that have occurred then. For whatever reason, and what's the word here, it's not surreptitious or um, nobody's trying to hide anything here. But the grant was forgotten to bring to the council, might have even gone through committee. But it wasn't on the agenda just because human error is human error wherever. And so we've had grants and the deadline's Friday, and so therefore we're gonna miss out on a very significant grant because and that's kind of where we've, I think, adjusted the rules for things, not always controversial or anything, but definitely important. Those are the things I remember is it just happens, I don't know why. I mean, I guess oversight and things like that would help and, but anyway, that's kind of my example is to some normal things that kind of get dropped sometimes and then we added them because they had to have it by this week to get, move it to get the money for our city.
And, and that would be the situation where if you have time to get that note to me, don't wait for that one item, just to make sure you get it agreed.
Right.
And I guess if it's, this is something that I have to dig into too, but if it was i- imperative enough, you know, the grant saying whole, whole city is gonna come to a halt if we don't get this grant or we don't get it. Then back and maybe, someone would have to dig into it, but for, for sure, the, the, the special meeting.
Mayor, am I to understand then, we're gonna come back to this? Or are we gonna take some action on it tonight?
Well, I didn't put it as an action item, I just put it on there.
We gotta, we just been talking about a rule here. To add a sentence similar to that, so we're now in the ordinance.
Right.
Put something in and then bring that to the ordinance.
Okay, any other discussion about it before we move on? Alright, so that was just informational. Um, the next item also is just informational, it's the firework times. One o'clock PM to ten PM on the dates of July one, two, and three, and five, and from ten PM to twelve oh one AM on July fourth. I would just ask people to please be careful with your fireworks. It have been kind of dry and hot, so um, please, please do be careful. And the next item is another informational item. City Hall will be closed on Thursday, July third, the pool will be closed July fourth and fifth. And your garbage will be picked up tomorrow instead of Thursday. Next are accounts payable claims for fiscal year twenty five of seventy thousand, one hundred forty four dollars and fifty six cents. Could I get a motion to approve that? Okay, Jason in second by Clyde. All in favor of approving the accounts payable claims of seventy thousand, one hundred forty four dollars and fifty six cents? Say aye. The next item is to approve the accounts payable claims for fiscal year twenty twenty six of eighty eight thousand, three hundred thirty eight dollars and ninety cents. Could I get a motion for that? Okay, Doug, in a second. Alright, Brett. All in favor of approving the accounts payable claims for fiscal year twenty six of eighty eight thousand, three hundred thirty eight dollars and ninety cents? Say aye. Now, next is to get a motion to approve the June payroll. And uh, it has reduced a little bit because we ended up uh, getting a check returned. So anyway, it's now the amount is four hundred thousand, five hundred twenty four dollars and fourteen cents. Could I get a motion to approve that? Okay, Mike in a second from Betsy. All in favor of approving the June payroll of four hundred thousand, five hundred twenty four dollars and fourteen cents? Say aye. Next, our department head comments. Do you have anything, Chief Mills?
Was five hundred and fifty seven.
Okay, did anybody have any questions from Chief Mills? Alright, in your packet, you have the finance department report. There's a couple of important dates in there that you might wanna read. And then the public works report. Uh, they've been pretty busy mowing, pulling weeds and things are looking, looking pretty good.
Mayor, can I ask a question? Frank's absence, no, I'm not gonna ask that public works, but I do, the finance department, uh, just a, a comment. As soon as we kind of know when we need to have special committee meetings to deal with the budget, um, planning and stuff, just, Johnson's out as soon as he gets it. It's helpful in the coming weeks to kind of have an idea when we are going to get together and stuff. And then the other thing is if um, you don't mind me looking at this uh, cash bank reconciliation report. I noticed some negative funds amounts. Um, so does that mean we are over budget for the year in those accounts? Is that what that's saying? Or over budget for the, that month? I'm on, I don't even know, page one of three.
This is the cash, this isn't budget actual, this is just the cash in those funds. So the budget actual, this is what that is, it's just the pressure point.
Okay, so what does that mean when it's negative then?
Well, it shouldn't be negative, but those are John questions, I would.
Well, it started with the negative and it ends with the negative.
Right, they didn't get any worse. I'm just wondering, does that mean that we were over in those accounts for the year?
I don't think so, that's just how much they spent, I think, because I see the study commission is on here. And that looks like about the right amount that they spent so far.
Oh, I see, okay, so, okay, so, so that, this month, money was spent in those accounts, okay.
Received. The balance was saved and then dispersed.
Okay, so like the study commission is right there. Yeah, okay, so their money came probably at the beginning of the year and fiscal year and then they're, that's how much, okay, okay. So anytime you'd have a money spent, then you would, and so there, when it's positive, like there where there's eighty thousand dollars in the permissive medical levy, that means they didn't have money spent then?
Received was right here and dispersed was zero for this month for me, cuz this is mows.
Oh, that's beginning balance, yeah.
Right.
Well, these beginning balances though, that means that. Well, these beginning balances, though, that means that's what they started with that month, so they must have been underwater a little bit, for whatever reason, okay. Negative, I mean, then it's below what it, we started the year at, um, I don't know if that's below their budget or not, though, I guess John would have to maybe come in on that, so.
Yeah, I'm afraid I'm not, I can't.
That's okay, that's for budget, yeah. Negatives always make you wonder, what, 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 what's going on?
Alright, Ben. Alright, there's uh, in your packet also is the cash report and journal voucher report. The committee meetings, the street committee will be on July ninth at four PM, and the Hooper will be on July ninth at four fifteen PM. I mean, don't think I had much for mayor comments, or the firework. But where I have my little Hooper, but. So I'll see if I can find them, I don't know, obviously not. So I just wanted to let everyone know, our phone system is not working correctly. We can call out, but when someone calls in, it just rings and rings on your end. So Mid Rivers came and checked, and said our lines are okay, but we need a new phone system. So hopefully, we'll be back to normal soon, our email seems to work fine, you can all be reached by email if you need to reach any of us for now. Uh, you can email me and tell me to call you, and I can call you, but you can't call me. And then a reminder that the organizers of the Fourth of July Parade are asking that no candy be thrown from vehicles, so please adhere to this rule. Again, be careful with uh fireworks. And we received a very nice thank you card from the Glendale Public Schools for the one-day swim passes that we donated, so I hope we can do that again next year. I don't have anything else, so we could move for adjournment. Okay, all, all in favor of adjournment, say aye. We had Jason and Clyde on that motion.
Thank you.